Carlos Planning Commission to order. And we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. And if you would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands. A nation, God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. A roll call, please.
Commissioner Garvey.
Present.
Mr. Yakaponi.
Present.
Commissioner Bradley.
Present.
Vice Chair Clements.
Present.
And Chair Ruth.
Present. Hey, the next item on our agenda is public comment. And public comment is limited to items not on the agenda. The commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act Government Code Section five four nine five four. Two. However, the commission's general policy is to refer items to the staff for attention. Or to have a matter placed on the future commission agenda for more comprehensive action or report. Is there anyone in the waiting room who would like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? If there is, you can use the raise hand icon located at the bottom of your screen, or you can press star nine on your phone. Sarah, is there anyone in the waiting room for this?
Not at this time. Oh, yes, we do have one.
Okay. If you could state your name and two minutes, please.
Hello, my apologies. My name is Dan Duval. I'm here for the historic designation for the Mills Act contract. My house is four first. I was exactly sure if this is the correct way.
Right.
If I need to be here to address the the commission or not.
That's right. So so this is sort of when we talk about things that are not on the agenda and we'll give you an opportunity when when that topic. Comes up in just a few minutes.
Okay, good. My apologies.
Thank you. Sarah, is there anyone else in the waiting room for this public comment?
Not at this time.
Okay. In that case, we can move on to the approval of minutes from our last meeting. Approval of our minutes from the meeting of October fourth, twenty twenty one. Does anyone have changes? Any of the commissioners have changes to the minutes?
None from me.
Okay, none from me.
None from me.
I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I will move that we approve the minutes from the October fourth, twenty twenty one, meeting of the San Carlos Planning Commission.
Second the motion. Oh, we got three seconds.
That was a close tie. So we have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, and for the record, I'm gonna go with Jim Yakaponi. That's what my ears. Commissioner Yakaponi, that's what my ears heard first for the second.
I know.
I yelled.
Commissioner Garvey.
Yes.
Commissioner Yakaponi.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
Vice Chair Clements.
Yes.
Chair Ruth.
Yes. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the public hearing. And the procedure for public hearing, the staff will present a report on the history, physical features, et cetera, on the application, followed with the staff's recommendations. The applicant will make a presentation thereafter. Interested members of the community may speak on the proposal. When all interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed and no further discussion from the floor can be held. The commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised that the public hearing described in this notice. The public notice or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Speakers should state their name prior to addressing the commission. This will assist the staff in preparing the minutes. The first item in the public hearing is for four four seven Hillcrest Road. APN zero five zero zero two four dash one zero zero. PLN twenty twenty one zero 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 five three. To consider a resolution recommending the city council authorize the city manager to execute a historical property agreement. A Mills Act contract. Staff, would you like to give a presentation?
Thank you. Good evening. Lisa Costa Sanders, Principal Planner. As introduced ahead and before you is consideration of a resolution recommending the city council authorized a historical property agreement. So in this situation, the planning commission is the recommending body and the city council will be the decision making body. The subject site is located at four four seven Hillcrest Road. It is one lot of six thousand two hundred fifty square feet in area. There is currently a two story, single family home and built in nineteen twenty seven. The site is own, single family residential. The property owner requests a historical property agreement, otherwise known as a Mills Act contract. To support the preservation, rehabilitation and restoration of their residence. Mills Act contracts are entered into between the city and a property owner. They have a they carry a minimum ten year term. And it provides for a reduction in property tax in exchange for the owner's agreement to preserve and maintain historic property. The subject site is a single family residence constructed in nineteen twenty seven. It's of the Spanish eclectic style of architecture. And it's included in the city's historic resource inventory that was prepared in nineteen ninety one. It was also recently evaluated and found to be eligible for inclusion in the California Register of Historic Resources. The evaluation that was prepared by the property owner's consultant was peer reviewed by the city's historic consultant and found to be accurate. The applicant proposes to complete a list of proposed improvements that are planned to be implemented over the ten year agreement schedule. These improvements include preservation, rehabilitation and restoration treatments to the residents. The scope of work has been reviewed by the city's historical consultant and is considered to be appropriate to execute a Mills Act contract. All work must be completed consistent with the interior standards and will require staff level design review for any. Your work. Public notice was mailed to all property owners and occupants within three hundred feet of the site on October fifth and published in the newspaper on October seventh. Staff has not received any comments to date. Thank you. The project has been found to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Section fifteen three three one applies to projects limited to maintenance, repair, rehabilitation. And conservation of historic resources in a manner consistent with the interior standards. This is the motion. Should you choose to make it, I've got a little out of order. So sorry about that. Here's the motion. Should you choose to make it? And the property owner is also here this evening if you have any questions of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Do planning commissioners have any clarifying questions before of staff before we move to the applicant presentation? Great.
Sorry, Chair Ruth.
I'm sorry.
I don't know if you can see the hands.
I missed it. So actually, I see we have a question from you and then from Commissioner Garvey. Please go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Just briefly, I wanted to check in with staff about. The last about the number of houses in the city that could be eligible for a Mills Act action like this. And the last time that we saw a request like this was quite a while ago. So I just wanted to understand. I understand the the technical requirements in order to be considered for the Mills Act, but just is this something that some more homeowners could take advantage of?
Yes, I'm not sure the exact number that how potentially eligible to qualify for a Mills Act. We do have several residences as well. Commercial properties could also qualify currently on the city's historical inventory that was completed in nineteen ninety one. And even since then, there's certainly more properties that would become eligible, given how long ago that was prepared and properties need to be at least fifty years old. And then there's there's other criteria after that, right? So that's not the sole criteria. And that's based on the Secretary of the Interior standards. So there could be, there could be quite a few properties. It is a voluntary agreement that the property owner requests. And the last one we did was on Pine Street several years ago. We have not seen one recently, but I know we've gotten interest for two more since this item has been brought forward.
And just to further my understanding, it's at least a ten year agreement, but then it can continue to get extended. So the tax benefit continues to go ongoing as long as I assume all the requirements are met. And then the the maintenance plan continues to get extended. Is that right?
That's correct. Yes.
Thanks. One last quick question. I looked around for the nineteen ninety one inventory. I didn't see it. And I didn't see it in the packet, but I missed it. And I couldn't find it online. Is it located somewhere where people can check it?
If we don't have it online, I think that is something we can post. The entire inventory was not included in the packet, but the sheet from the inventory is included. Packet page twenty five, twenty six and twenty seven is the relevant sheet from that inventory.
Thank you.
Commissioner Garvey, do you have a question?
Just two questions. Thank you, Chair Ruth. Thank you, Lisa, for that presentation. I was so interested in this property. I drove by it over the weekend. What a what a beautiful property. And without a doubt, this is the oldest home in San Carlos that I've ever seen. I had a a neighbor many years ago in San Carlos who had a home that was built in nineteen thirty two. And I thought that was the oldest home in San Carlos, but nineteen twenty seven is older and it's a beautiful home. Two questions. One of the things I noticed on the list to be done was to restore windows. Lisa, can you help me understand these? Can these be double pane windows and still meet the the flavor of what the Mills Act is? It would be really nice if they could be double pane, then there's still an energy efficiency aspect to it.
Yes, they can be. I think the important aspect is the the style of the window is keeping, but yes, they can certainly be double painted. Yes.
Great. That makes me feel better. Thank you. And my last question is, when this property is designated, and and I think it's a good idea. Does this in any way infringe on what adjoining properties can do in the way of remodeling their properties? Or can they still proceed as they normally would, you know, the next door neighbors, should they want to do anything?
Yes, certainly. This this designation would not carry beyond those this property itself. So it would not impact any adjacent single family residences.
All right. Excellent. Thank you. That's it. That's all my questions.
Commissioner Yakaponi, a question?
Thank you, Chair Ruth. So maybe one comment. I was not at all familiar with this this act and this provision. And what a what a great way to help those homeowners in the city who are of mind to improve or upgrade important properties to do so. So this is great and glad that the the applicant is applicants are pursuing this. My my question for staff is we we have a list of maintenance and improvement items over the coming years. What is the process for the applicant to submit? Either like photos that show the works completed or get approval before the work is started to make sure that they actually comply with the schedule as agreed, like just how does that work? It'd be interesting to know.
Yeah, I don't have the exact details, but I do know there's some flexibility. Because the the benefit that they receive is in many situations much less than the cost of the actual work that they're going to be completing. So it's not a direct kind of reimbursement situation. But there is some reviews and check ins to make sure that they're on track and they are doing the work that they intended to do.
Through the chair, I think you, Lisa, if I could just add to that, I used to work in a city where they had like the whole downtown was a historic district. So I'm a little bit familiar with some of these requests. There is a requirement for the property owner to report to the city the progress that they're making on their ten year maintenance schedule. And certainly, it's not something that's held to a on ink on paper. It can fluctuate a little bit, or maybe there could be a reordering, maybe one year the property owner wants to get ahead of something on one item. So it's definitely a conversation with staff, but in general, there is a reporting requirement. And in addition to that, depending upon the type of work that is being done. For example, if there were to be like repair of the siding or replacement of windows, that's something that would, because the property owner is in a Mills Act agreement, it would compel the property owner to let the city know so that we have the opportunity to understand what what the modification to the home is to make sure that the work being done is being done in a way that's consistent with the Secretary of Interior standards and doesn't reduce the character defining features of a historic property. So there is kind of more of a relationship that the property owner would have with the city, just checking in and to make sure that whatever modifications are making to their home, they're being done in a way to preserve the quality and the character defining features of the home.
Great. Thank you, Lisa. That's real helpful.
Vice Chair. Go ahead. Go back to Commissioner Bradley and then Vice Chair Clements.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Lisa, for a good presentation. I also, Ellen, I went up looking for the property and usually I go right to these things since I've been on the commission for five years and lived here for thirty five years, but I had a little trouble finding it and it wasn't using my guess, I guess, but I can do a mailman and some of the neighbors. I did. I did find the property and I agree it's very handsome. I'm glad it's on the register. And I'm glad it's in our city. One comment, one of the, well, one question is talking about the flexibility of their work schedule spread over nine or ten years, I think. Can they complete something early by a year or two? If they want to, or if they need to? That flexible?
Yes, there is that flexibility. Yes.
Great. Okay. That answers my question. And this is a comment. I know we seldom, if they ever get in the business of dictating colors or or even textures, but I'm really struck by hearing the two pictures, one on, I believe, on page, package page twenty five. And recent picture, which is on package page number ten. All of the homes in the photographs looks very similar. One's in color, which makes it nice. But what I'm struck by is the fact that the the older picture shows the garage door as being either stained dark or painted a dark color. And yet, the this, our current picture is in white, although it looks like a new garage door, but it may be years old, who knows? But my point is this, if they want to replace the door, if that picture isn't showing the new one, I would much prefer to see, and I think it would be more historically accurate to have the new or garage door painted in a darker color or stained.
You are correct. The garage door that is shown is a newer door. And they do intend to replace the garage door. And so that would require a design review at a staff level to ensure that it meets the intent of the Secretary of Interior standards. And so that the style, the type, the coloring of that door would need to be consistent with the architectural style of the residence.
Right. So that'll be taken care of.
Yes.
That's great. Thank you.
Clarifying question from Vice Chair Clements.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I was just looking through the agreement and wondering. It addresses the notice of non renewal, but it strikes me as, you know, the renewal time and the extension year by year. Seems like the time where the city would weigh in to see if they had gotten any evidence that the improvements had been done and if the homeowner was on track with the plan. And so although I didn't I didn't really see the standards for renewal. Although it does give the city an out saying at any time they could they could have a hearing and say that it really wasn't in compliance and then it would cease. So is there some procedure or tempo with the renewals? As to what would be expected to be shown or provided?
Yeah, my understanding is it's an automatic rolling renewal that extends out unless either party chooses to terminate the agreement. And so there are the provisions of, you know, kind of why and how the city could terminate the agreement.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Perhaps we can go to the applicant who would like to speak. Am I correct with the applicant, the applicant up? Before we open the public comment?
My apologies. It's also a good short statement. I prepared a presentation. I was kind of instructed just to be here to answer questions, but we've, my wife and I, Kelsey, have been loving all the comments. Everyone has said we share everyone's viewpoints in the house. I guess I could help clarify some of the questions to be considered for this Mills Act. My understanding is the property must have some of important, must have lived there, someone of historic importance. An historic event must have should have happened there, or it must have some architectural features that contribute to its historic value. And we think this is where the health aligns with the city of San Carlos and its founding, the Spanish eclectic style, which is ubiquitous to San Carlos in the founding of that time period, the twenties and thirties. Now it matches. The Drake's Building downtown, a new restaurant that opened up. We've been told this included made a walking tour. So there is a lot of history, we think, in this architecture and by the sound of the commission, it sounds like that that feeling is shared. So we really appreciate that. And our goal here is to protect the character more than anything, to make sure that we can perform renovations to keep the house up to date. We had to replace a sewer lateral, for example, that's filling, it's a hundred year old iron pipe, and that's going to be costly. So this money is going to go to maintaining the property and and restoring it to its historical significance, i.e. the windows, the garage door, bringing it back to the character it had at the time it was built. And that is our intention. And we really appreciate everyone's time and understanding with with this motion. So thank you, Commissioner. And I'm open to questions if you have any.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not seeing any hands raised, so I think maybe we can move to the public comment period for this topic. And if you'd like to make a public comment on agenda item six A four four seven Hillcrest Road, now is the time to speak. You may join the Zoom meeting or call the phone number and enter the meeting ID eight three nine six one three five eight four nine nine and virtually raise your hand by clicking on the raise height and icon. Or if you're joining by phone, press star nine and then star six to unmute. So Sarah, do we have anyone in the waiting room to speak on this topic?
No callers at this time.
Okay, well. In that case, I would entertain a motion to close the public comment period.
Chair, I would make a motion.
Close the public comment period.
I had seconded.
I have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Commissioner Garvey.
Yes.
Commissioner Yakaponi.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
Vice Chair Clements.
Yes.
And Chair Ruth.
Yes.
Well, now we have, we can, it's a deliberation phase or just planning commission discussion. Are there anybody like to start off the discussion?
I'm happy to, Chair. I I think the property is lovely and I appreciate the owner's focus on retaining its historical value and appearance and making that better. So I think this is a this is a great program. And frankly, I wish I'd thought about it as we were trying to do some work on our nineteen thirty house. We did have to replace the sewer lateral. It was expensive. We did have to replace the windows. I wanted wood and that was not that easy to find and that was not cheap. So I I am, I think that's the owners are being resourceful. And I think that the you know, I'm glad that the city has a program to, you know, take advantage and comply with the state law that requires that. So I I support the application.
Commissioner Garvey.
Thank you, Chair Ruth. I will echo what Vice Chair Clements said. I support the application. I appreciate the owner's commitment to for all the future work. That was a long list there that Lisa showed us in the packet. And it's a beautiful home. It just needs a little bit of tender loving care and it'll it'll come back to its original magnificence. And so well done, and I'm supportive of the project.
Well. I'll provide my perspective, which I think that the entering into this agreement comes at a modest cost to the city, but nevertheless, a cost. And in this case, it seems to me to be worth it because of the being the oldest residence in the city and and a particularly fine example. So I would fall on the side of approving it. I do wonder there's got to be a continuum of buildings in their historical significance, ranging from this one, which may be one of the most, and all the way up to to barely, you know, to buildings that maybe one would consider all that valuable. And so from kind of a cost effectiveness perspective, how do we house that line drawn? Now, I know what's before us today is not a question, is not to make a general rule, but I'm just curious, you know, what what qualified this one? Is there anything in the Mills Act that defines what qualifies it that's fairly objective? I mean, is it being on the the California Registry of Historical Places? Is that? Yes, or is it up to the planning commission to decide if they agree that it's that it's suitable? Can the staff?
Sure. So so as you indicated, kind of that minimum threshold to even be considered is you would need to be listed in the National Registry or listed in any state, city, county, official registry of historical or architecturally significant sites, places or landmarks. So that's that first threshold. And from there, the city council and the planning commission would have some discretion to see, you know, is this is the list of improvements appropriate? Are they really, you know, meeting the standards and the intent of the Mills Act contract? And kind of evaluate even on a fiscal standpoint, if it's a significant impact to the city's budget, or if it's at, you know, a time where the city is particularly at low resources. So those factors could be taken into consideration for each project.
Thank you for clarifying that. Vice Chair Clements, your hand icon is up. Do you have another question, another thought?
No, sorry, Chair. That was an aberrant hand.
See, just trying not to miss, try not to miss the little raised hand.
You're very kind and very patient with me as I frequently ask questions. Thank you.
Yeah. Yep. Well, it seems like if there's ever a situation to 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 give a thumbs up, this one would qualify in my mind. It's a, I guess it's a recommendation we make to the city council. So if are there any final thoughts before we consider the motion?
I support all my colleagues' comments.
I would entertain entertain a motion.
I'd be happy to move. I moved that the planning commission adopt a resolution recommending that the city council authorize the city manager to enter into an historic preservation agreement, a Mills Act contract with the property owners at four forty seven Hillcrest Road.
I will second that motion.
Let me have a motion in a second. A roll call, please.
Commissioner Garvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakaponi?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Clements?
Yes.
And Chair Ruth?
Yes. Wonderful. Well, very, very good luck with your, with the, with the project. And I look forward to seeing.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yes, and thank you for coming on to talk to us. Congratulations.
The next item in our public hearing is for four ninety five Bragato, APN zero four six zero five two three three zero, PLN twenty twenty one dash zero zero one three nine, request for a conditional use permit, design review and transportation demand management plan for a new automobile sales and service facility. Steph, would you like to give a presentation on this?
Thank you. I'll be giving this presentation. As introduced, consideration of a conditional use permit, design review and transportation demand management plan for new automobile sales and repair facility at four ninety five Bragato Road. The subject site consists of one lot, approximately two point one four acres in area with an existing twenty three thousand six hundred square foot main building as well as storage buildings. The site has access from both Bragato Road and Industrial Road. The site is located within the light industrial zoning district and planned industrial land use designation for the general plan. The site is adjacent to the Delta Star building and right across from the PG&E yard. The applicant proposes to improve the existing building, remove the ancillary structures and approve the site for a new Honda automobile sales and repair facility. The requested entitlements include conditional use permit for the auto sales aspect of the business, a design review for the facade improvements to the building and a transportation demand management plan. And this relocates the Honda dealership from the existing location at seven 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 Industrial Road. As the planning commission knows, that recently obtained approval for a new life science reuse of the property. So let's start with the conditional use permit. Automobile vehicle service and repair is considered a permitted use. And the proposed parts and service hours are daily from seven AM to seven PM with after hour drop off opportunity. The automobile vehicle sales and leasing aspect of the business is considered a conditional use permit requiring planning commission consideration. The applicant proposes to operate the sales and showroom hours daily from nine AM until nine PM, except on Sundays when they would close at seven PM. The proposed project for the sales and repair facility meets the city code requirements. The sales will be conducted entirely within the building, the showroom. The noise generating activities will be conducted within an enclosed masonry building. The project was found to be consistent with the general plan as it improves an underutilized property and contributes to the city's financial viability. And then the improvement to the site, as outlined in your staff report, comply with the city code requirements. I'll go over the site plan a bit. The property here, as you see, has access from the cul-de-sac at Bragato to the left of the site and then to the west at industrial, excuse me, on the west side and then Industrial Road at the east side. Thank you, Lisa. The existing building will be improved with new vehicle repair in that light blue area. And the sales and showroom would be located closer to Industrial Road in that pink area. The site also has some site contamination with an ongoing remediation under the authority of the Environmental Protection Agency and the Regional Water Quality Control Board. The remediation work does include removal of some of the contaminated soil as well as installation of an asphalt cap over the area shown in dark gray at the bottom of the slide here. No penetrations are allowed within this area. It's really intended to cap it and preserve that site. So to meet the city's landscaping requirement, the applicant is proposing trees and above ground planters within that parking area. Next item is the design review aspect. The applicant proposes to improve the existing twenty three thousand six hundred square foot building and remove the existing ancillary buildings. The facade improvements include painting the entire building exterior a light gray color and installing new exterior metal panels in a light gray color around the new showroom area with a portion of the south facing facade and the east facing facade, facade which face Industrial Road. Along the Industrial Road facade, which is what you see now, the applicant also proposes a new roll up glass door at the service entrance, three new glass storefronts at the showroom sales office area. As well, the applicant proposes to increase the height just a bit with a new parapet to create a tower element with the Honda logo and the blue and gray metal panels. The facade also includes a new canopy and signage. And on this next slide, the applicant has provided some updated kind of renderings, as you see more in a three D visual of how that new showroom area would look with the new glass storefronts and the metal panels and then that entry tower element. And this is the face that you would see from Industrial Road. San Carlos municipal code also requires properties to, excuse me, new businesses to prepare a transportation demand management program to achieve a twenty percent trip reduction. The applicant has submitted their TDM plan that includes commuter benefits, alternate work schedule and commuter marketing and outreach to encourage transportation alternatives. We did map this and the site is actually exactly equal distance from the Belmont train station and the San Carlos train station. So just about eight tenths of a mile, if you come up Bragato and then you could go down Old County Road in either direction. That represents about a sixteen minute walk. And that direct path from Bragato to Old County Road was improved with the city's East Side Connect project in San Carlos. And that includes improved sidewalks, trees and lighting. So it would be a pleasant walk to the San Carlos train station. All right. The project was found to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act under section fifteen three three two for infill developments that are consistent with the general plan and zone. Public notice was mailed to property owners within three hundred feet of the site on October fifth and published in the newspaper on October seventh. We have not received any comments to date. And here is the formal motion. Should you choose to make it, I'd be happy to try to answer any of your questions. And we also have the applicant here this evening. That includes the owner of the dealership as well as their architect. Thank you.
Planning Commission, questions? Commissioner Garvey?
Thank you, Chair Ruth. Thank you, Lisa, for that presentation. I just had one question. This relates to the site remediation that is ongoing and the application to the water board and the Environmental Protection Agency for approval of the remediation plan. I think it said in the packet that they were awaiting approval from the EPA and they thought that was coming. Maybe it was a week or two ago. I'm just curious, can you give us a status update? Is that still in process or do we have an approval from them on that?
Yeah, I can have the applicant and provide you more information as to the status. Thank you.
Great, thank you. That's my only question.
Let's gather our other questions and then see if, and then, and then get the applicant on the line. Commissioner Yakaponi?
Thanks, Chair Ruth. Just one question this time. The, the TDM, does it target all trips in and out of the facility? I guess my, I'm thinking that unlike some businesses, well, because it's more of a retail business, there'll be a lot of customers driving in and out, not just employees. And so I'm wondering, does the TDM address both the customer visits as well as the, the employee visits or employee traffic?
It does, it does take into consideration the total trips to and from the site. And as you can imagine, it's much more difficult to ask your customers to arrive via carpool or take a train in. But oftentimes, I think when you're buying a car, that's probably what you're going to do because you're hoping to drive away with that car. And then also with the after hours drop off, I think that helps with the peak hour traffic demands. I know automobile dealerships in general, their traffic is typically, typically off peak. So it doesn't have a significant transportation impact. But it's a little easier to control the employee trips. So most of these programs are geared towards incentivizing the employees to use alternate transportation methods to arrive at work.
Now, I guess the, thank you, Lisa. So that was kind of what my thought was and, you know. Well, I always learn so much when we have these discussions. And I think the, you know, the idea that you can greatly affect one population and as you suggest, maybe not affect another one. I, I trust that the people who develop the plan and our consultant use that, that set of metrics and therefore can remain confident in their twenty percent reduction, even though really half of the population of trips is going to be untouched or less touched.
Yeah. And as you know, we do have that, that check in and that evaluation period. We'll be making sure that they're making, they're achieving their twenty percent trip reduction or they'll have to implement some additional measures.
Great. Thanks for that reminder, too.
My question is, is very related, which is the twenty percent reduction. What's the baseline that that twenty percent is calculated from, considering that it's a new, a new business and the property is currently underutilized?
So it is based on the trips that would be generated by this type of facility. So they take the international transportation engineers' trip generation rates for an automobile dealership of this size and location and then determine how many trips that would generate typically. And then determine a twenty percent reduction of that. And I'm sorry, I don't know if that's specifically listed in here. I'd have to refresh my memory on the TDM plan, but that's the methodology that is used.
Do we, does that plan have a estimate of how many additional trips would be up to the eighty percent number? What, what, how many additional trips that would be? I'm just trying to get a feel for the magnitude.
I need to look it over and get back to you on that.
Okay. Commissioner Garvey, another question?
Just, just one more. Building on your question, I'm, I'm curious that they go back to the National Registry for this type of business as the baseline, when a half a mile down the road, we have the Honda dealership and, and yet they don't use. You would think that the data from that would be very similar to what they would experience a half a mile down the street at the new location. I don't know if it's worth it to compare the two baselines and see if they're dramatically different, but that's an interesting approach that they've chosen to take. It's more just a comment than a question.
Would the, would the applicant like to, to, to provide any information or respond to any of the thoughts that have been raised?
Are you able to hear me?
Oh, now we do. Welcome.
We've got, this is Andre Kemenetsky. I'm the group operations manager for the Putnam Automotive Group. And I, I can answer on some of the TDM related questions and on the EPA related questions. But I, I think Kent Putnam from the Putnam Group wanted to give just a general introduction. So if I can set my comments aside and let Kent give the introduction to the business, would that be acceptable?
Yes, absolutely. Welcome.
All right.
Can you hear me and see me? I'm not.
Can hear you, but not.
I'm hearing you. Let me see, the, I'm not seeing you, though.
Oh, here we go.
Now we see you.
Okay. All right, thank you. First, I want to say thank you so much for considering this project. And I want to thank the staff of San Carlos. They've been very accommodating for this project. And as you know, Primo Honda, Honda is, is gone actually, and now it's San Carlos Honda. And we have to be off that property very, very shortly. So I really appreciate all the work that the city staff has done to, to get this project to where it is. And I'll let my partner, Andre, we do have the EPA license. And to the number of trips, you know, that's unlike a grocery store or something, it's, people don't shop for cars very often. So it's, we don't really get a lot of people coming at any one time. So do you have any questions for me?
Commissioner Yakaponi?
Yeah, thank you. And just first a comment. Very pleased that the city will be able to retain the presence of a Honda dealership with, with your proposal. Assuming that all the commissioners vote yes, but so wish you well going forward. My, the one question that I did have, actually the bigger picture question. Do you plan to carry inventory onsite? And it looks like there's a lot of parking. And is that for inventory or do you expect a lot of workers and customers? How does that actually work?
Yeah, both. We'll, we'll carry inventory there onsite and probably offsite and employee parking and customer parking.
Okay, good. And maybe just an operational question. With, with two entrances, is there going to be, let's say, an after hours cut through corridor between Bragato and Industrial? Or do you plan to like close off your gate? How, how would you envision that working?
Gosh, I'm not sure. I haven't thought of that yet. Like after hour service drop off normally.
Yeah, I just, you know, on the good side, people, it would be convenient for people. On the bad side, it might be, you know, become a, become a shortcut and a nuisance for others in the area. So just was wondering if there was any plans to not think about your property as an alley, so to speak.
Yeah, I, I don't want anyone driving there at nighttime. I, I mean, the property's got to be secure when we're closed.
Thank you.
Let's see, is there a hand raised?
Oh, Andre.
From Andre?
Yeah. Okay, so can you hear me all right?
Yes, yes, we hear.
I'll see if the camera works. This is a little different format than we're, we're used to here, so.
It's always nice to see, but not essential.
All right. Well, we'll, we'll, we'll start with the EPA. This has been a very complicated project because it, it's been a site that had some plans proposed previously, previous to our purchase for environmental remediation with the EPA and the water board. But the owners weren't quite ready to, to pull the trigger and, and spend any more money on remediation. So we had to, we had to work very closely together with the water board, the city and the EPA to, to make sure that we could find a plan that would work. And it turns out that, you know, by, by renovating the property in its place and not doing a lot of excavating and by capping the area that's on the borderline of Delta Star, where some of the excavation and capping is taking place. We actually found a really good kind of solution for preserving the Honda dealership in San Carlos and, you know, benefiting the, the industrial frontage that was a little blighted by the current situation, both environmentally and from an aesthetic standpoint. So we were able to, we, we had a preliminary draft before we became the owners. And then we were able to move that to a final draft as soon as we became the owners of the property in late August. And in about the third week of September, we got the EPA final approval letter and the city has a copy of that. And so that, that is fully underway. On the TDM proposal, it was very interesting for us as well. We've worked through some of the commuter benefits packages for our rolling game dealerships, for commuter vouchers and, and working with bicycle commuting and Caltrain. But in, in this particular instance, there is a Honda dealership, which was the preexisting Honda. which was the pre-existing Honda dealership of Primo. I'm not sure why that's not used as a baseline. But I think since we've been operating on their property for about a month and a half and probably for another month and a half, we're kind of getting to see their, their traffic patterns. And I think, I think between the trip reductions in the TDM plan that's submitted and incorporating some bicycle parking, having the back access on the Brigato side for employees to, to kind of get to Caltrain a little easier, will encourage commuting. I know part of the TDM plan had a, a study of employees and, and addresses. We were able to release kind of addresses without names to the TDM planners to show the patterns of where people, employees live and how likely they are to be able to use bicycle transportation, public transportation or carpooling. And there were some numbers there that showed that we could receive, we could achieve those reductions. So I think, I think the new Honda facility will be, you know, as well suited as the previous one and, and has some additional advantages that we can incorporate along the way.
Thank you for that information. If there are no more clarifying question, questions from the commissioners, we could open this item for public comment. Oh?
Oh.
I'll hold off.
Commissioner Garvey, then Bradley.
I'll hold off. Thank you, Chair Roof.
Okay, Commissioner Bradley?
Yes, just quickly. We have a history of, of people in the, in that area along 101 of wanting to put advertising signs that are illuminated at night and rather distracting and, in my opinion, a safety hazard for the drivers. You don't, since you're setting back a ways from 101, I don't think it would be necessary for people driving by looking for your dealership to rely on a sign like that. And do you have any plans to do that?
No, we're not going to put some huge sign up. It, it wouldn't be appropriate and I'm sure it's not allowed. I think the, the sign that's at the current dealership is the same one where we'll be moving to this location.
I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Okay, maybe we can open this item for public comment if there are any. If you'd like to make a public comment on Agenda Item 6B 495 Brigato, now is the time to speak. You may join the Zoom meeting or call the phone number 1-669-900-6833 and enter the meeting ID.
I think Commissioner Garvey had a comment or a question.
I'm going to hold off. Thanks, Chair Bradley. I'll wait.
Okay.
Or Commissioner Bradley.
And if you're joining, if you're, if you'd like to join my phone, dial the number, press nine and then star six to unmute when called upon. So Sarah, is there anyone in the waiting room for this item?
No callers at this time.
I'm giving it that extra couple of seconds. Often it's filled, okay. In that case, I would entertain a motion to close the public comment period.
I'll make a motion that we close the public comment period for this item.
A second.
Give a motion in a second. A roll call, please.
Commissioner Garvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakapony?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Clements?
Yes.
And Chair Roof?
Yes. Okay, the discussion, discussion period. While people are getting their thoughts organized, I'll, I'll make the first comment then that, which is that I like the, the fact that you've dealt with the constraints of the remediation and the certain area had to be paved, yet you were still able to come up with a solution of the trees and planters so that it'll be a attractive area. And we love our trees in San Carlos and really glad to see that, that you've gone all in on the, on the tree plan despite the, the challenges of the site. That, that, that was my, my main comment. I'd see Commissioner Garvey and then Commissioner Yakapony.
Thank you, Chair Roof. I had never been to Brigato. I'd never even heard of Brigato. So I decided to drive down Brigato and drive by the property. And this is an underutilized, very tired looking property. And I'm just very pleased that the Honda dealership is going to revitalize this in so many ways. So it's, it's going to be a wonderful looking, front facing, right on industrial property. And it's, the property now is, is just really, really tired looking. First, just a response, I'm really pleased that EPA has issued the final approval letter for the remediation. That's great news. And one of the things, you know, on the TDM, one of the advantages, I think, this Honda dealership has over the one that's a half mile down the street is it's closer not only to one, but to two Caltrain stations. As Lisa pointed out in her report, it's less than a mile, point eight miles from Belmont and San Carlos. So that's a real plus and it's a nice walk. It's going to be a, a nice walking area to get there. So if I drop my car up there in the morning and then I go to work and then I come back, I can take the train that one way and, and, and pick up the car. So I think that's a real plus for this new dealership. I like the project and I'm, I'm going to support it.
Commissioner Yakapony?
Thank you, Chair Roof. Mom and I would echo my colleague, Commissioner Garvey. It's great to see creative and attractive repurposing of, of an asset. And it, it will add some energy to that part of San Carlos. And as I said earlier, it's really great to see, to see the Putnam Group continuing to be interested in San Carlos with, with the Honda dealership. And I too support the project and look forward to continuing their presence in the city.
Vice Chair Clements?
Chair. I had a quick question about the plan for fencing. And what is the new fencing going to be made of? I see the first diagram was chain link. When this is, so what is the boundary going to be made of?
So can, can everyone hear me all right?
Yeah.
Okay, so we've spec for no fencing on the front. The front will be open on industrial. Something I forgot to mention earlier is we're in the process of changing the customer facing address or description of the property from 495 Brigato to 268 Industrial Road. Lisa's given us some pointers on how to, how to get that achieved. So we're, we're in the process of re-registering the property. So the customer will see 268 Industrial as an address for the property. The, there will be landscaping on the front and there will be no fencing or nothing closed off on the front. We discussed with the former Primo Honda owners as far as crime and safety over the last four or five years that they've operated there. And they, they didn't think that that was a detriment. So we thought the landscaping and the frontage would look much better and fit much better into San Carlos's kind of new image plans to be open and landscaped in the front. On the north side, we have almost a zero lot line neighbor easement. There'll be a wrought, black wrought iron decorative fence on the north side. And on the south side, for about the same distance, until you can see the Delta Star parking lot, which is the first, approximately the first half of the side of the property on the south side will also be a wrought iron fence. There's kind of an older historical office building with a terracotta roof on, adjacent to us on that side. So that'll get a, a black wrought iron fence. And then where the parking lot for Delta Star starts, starts to the back and on the back side where there's parking lot to parking lot and it's a little bit more industrial looking, it'll be a chain link fence with privacy slats.
Thank you. Well, I'm excited for the, for the wrought iron look and understand the chain link and so good with the privacy slats. So I'm, you know, this proposal seems to meet all the requirements. The timing seems good given the EPA's recent approval. And I just wanted to say that I'm excited also that the dealership is staying in San Carlos. It would have been very easy to move out. We're not that big of a place. And yet here you are sprucing up industrial. And I, I like that you're also changing the address to, now our industrial is, has cachet, right? So locations on industrial. So I'm happy with the proposal, happy to support it. Thank you.
Further comments or questions from the commissioners? Are we ready to look at the, at the resolution at the moment?
I'm ready, so I'll make the motion that the Planning Commission moved to approve fine review conditions, conditional use permit, transportation and management plan for the development of an automobile dealership and services used in the existing building at 395 Brigato Road, APN 046052360 for the reasons incorporated in the staff report above and including the conditions and code compliance.
Okay, we have a motion. Can I have a second? Is there a second?
There was a second.
We have a motion in a second. Lisa, a roll call, please.
Commissioner Garvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakapony?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Clements?
Yes.
Chair Roof?
Yes. Congratulations. Looking forward to seeing a viable business.
Thank you. I appreciate it. We look forward to being in business in San Carlos.
Yeah, thank you for being here.
A great project.
Yeah, thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Okay.
Wyman just told me today that I need a new car.
Talking to the right guy.
As long as you walk over there.
Yeah, you have to use a train.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item in the public hearing is consideration of a resolution recommending the city council approve an amendment to the San Carlos Municipal Code, Section 18.29.040E1, to expand public notice requirements for residential design review committee applications. Staff, would you like to give presentation?
Great, thank you. I can go to the next slide, Lisa. Great, so just a little bit of background. Projects that go before the residential design review committee currently require a public notice to be mailed to all property owners within 150 feet of the subject site, 150 foot radius, at least 10 days prior to the hearing. The city council requested that the notification area be expanded to 300 foot radius from the subject site. And that's consistent with our other public notification requirements. And they've appreciated the consistency and also to ensure that additional neighbors had their opportunity to learn about the project and have some input. So projects that go before the residential design review committee include new single family residences, residences that exceed with the additional square footage, 3,000 square feet in area. And then we also have a floor area ratio based on lot slope for sloping properties. And so residences or additions that exceed that would be required to go to the RDRC for design review. The applicants are also required to provide notification of their proposed project to their neighbors and send the plans with them in a neighborhood acknowledgement form. They're also required to post the notice at the site. And then the city mails the required notice and provides the notification list. So what's before you is consideration to amend San Carlos Municipal Code, Section 18.29.040E1, which defines what that notification radius is for RDRC review items. Currently it's 300 foot and the request is to amend that to 300 feet. As I indicated in our supplemental requirements, the applicants are required to do a neighborhood notification. So we'll change that if this is adopted to match that 300 foot notice list. And then we'll provide that notification list to the applicants. So those will both be consistent. We reviewed this proposed ordinance amendment to the California Environmental Quality Act and we found that it's exempt as it's not considered a project. As it's just a minor tax amendment that would not have an impact on the environment. And this, the ordinance, the draft wording was published in the newspaper on October 7th and we have not received any comments tonight. And here is the motion. Should you wish to make it, I'd be happy to try to respond on to your questions.
Questions before, if there's any public comments? Let, let's move to the public comment opportunity.
Good chair, I just had a
Oh, or do we need?
Question, sorry if you can't see my hand. Thank you. I just wanted to ask Lisa what typical noticing requirements are in other communities? And how does this proposal compare?
Sure, so the minimum notice requirement under state law is that 300 foot radius notification. And so that's what San Carlos has done. And most jurisdictions in Sammentown County also require that 300 foot notification. For some jurisdictions that have larger properties, like the town of Atherton, the town of Portola Valley, they've expanded that notification. So for example, in Atherton, they do a 500 foot radius. And in Portola Valley, for some of their more controversial projects, they're doing about a thousand foot radius notification. And that's really, if you just did 300 foot, you're catching one neighbor on either side for some of the properties. Right. But most jurisdictions in Sammentown County follow the 300 foot.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Shall we see if there's any public comment? If you would like to make a public comment on Agenda Item 6C, expand public notice requirements for RDRC applications, now is the time to speak. You may join the Zoom meeting or call the, the phone number and click the raise hand icon or press star nine. Sarah, is there anyone in the waiting room to speak on this?
No callers at this time.
Okay, let's, I would entertain a motion to close the public comment period.
So moved, move we close public comment?
I'd second that motion.
We have a motion in a second. A roll call, please.
Commissioner Garvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakapony?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Clements?
Yes.
And Chair Roof?
Yes. Do we have discussion on this?
I'll start by saying uh.
Yes. Go ahead, Commissioner Bradley.
I'm certainly in favor of this. I I am a little concerned. Uh our staff time. Precious to each every one of this or staff members. And I don't want to overload them, but I think this is uh. Step in the right direction. Uh back when I was chair of the RDRC. I thought we had increased it to three hundred. All cases, not. Some of them, but uh I'm I'm glad to support this motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Garvey.
Um thank you, Chair Ruth. I I will let go uh Commissioner Bradley's comments and and say that I'll also support this motion. Having spent almost four months uh on the residential design review committee. I can say that um neighbors, uh including neighbors from a hundred and fifty feet away are many times interested and have comments on a project. More comments um most of the time makes for a better project and I think extending it to three hundred feet um makes sense. So I will, I will support this.
Vice Chair Clements?
Thank you, Chair. So just to clarify then, this change is required. Under state law for us to be uh consistent, that three hundred is the minimum. Is that what Lisa you had said?
Um it's not required under state law. We can have another standard for these projects, but projects that require a public hearing. Uh do require that three hundred foot notice, but in this situation, it's it can be reduced. Uh but we think that consistency is nice.
I see. Well, I certainly support more transparency. Um hopefully, the amount of notices that need to be mailed out by the city is not so much more. Um it's not like it's a half mile. Um it's just a few more houses, I think. Um unless Lisa could edify me otherwise. You know, how many more households does this require and? Modest amount of postage and work?
Um it wouldn't be substantial. You're correct.
Okay, well, I certainly support the greater transparency and getting the community more involved. Thank you.
I was afraid you were going to quiz us on our geometry. If you double the radius, what's the surface area?
I was like, how many feet in a mile?
It's going to be a fair amount. It's gonna be quite a few additional. But um I um I also support uh having an opportunity for more. Greater diameter of people to be given the opportunity. Um in addition, of course, this is in the the written notices in addition to the notice that's posted. Um on the site itself and um in the newspaper. So there are other channels um for the information for for the public to be notified. But um but it makes sense to uh to get a little bit broader with a letter. So I support the supported it as well. Are there other um any other thoughts before we um? Move to the motion.
Well, I just to join in with what the chair just said, um I live close to El Camino relatively. I actually got noticed through the mail for a project that's developing um in Redwood City. And so um and it's, you know, as we go into a time where there might be um. An additional story or a little bit more density than people expect. Um maybe that's not going to all go through the RDRC, so maybe that's not germane. But anyway, I appreciated the mailed. Notice, so it caught my attention much better than anything else would have. And I was thrilled, by the way. I was like, yay. Two and a half story building near me. That's exciting. Yeah.
Any further thoughts? I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. I move that the planning commission adopt a resolution. Uh recommending introduction of an ordinance to amend San Carlos municipal code section eighteen point two nine point zero four zero E one. To expand public notice requirements for the residential design review committee based on the findings listed in the resolution.
We have a second.
I'd second that.
Great, we have a motion and a second to roll call, please.
Commissioner Garvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakaponi?
Sorry, yes.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Clements?
Yes.
And Chair Ruth?
Yes. Good. The next item on our agenda is item number seven, reports, correspondence and general information. Are a report on recent city council actions.
No reports on recent council actions for this evening, Chair Ruth.
Okay, the planning commission comments or reports. Commissioner Yakaponi, you raising your hand for this item?
Yes, yes, thank you, Chair Ruth. I just wanted to uh note for the record that a couple of weeks ago. I was contacted by a representative from the Presidio Bay Development Team. Um and last week uh spent thirty minutes getting a briefing of their uh their plans for the six four two. Quarry Road project. So um I uh got to listen to what they had in mind.
Thank you. And I'll add to add that I had the similar opportunity to receive their um their input.
As did I. I have not taken advantage, taken them up on their offer.
Are there any other planning commission comments or reports? Let's move to part C, correspondence.
No correspondence this evening, commissioners.
And then on to D, planning staff comments, reports and updates of current projects.
Uh yes, Chair Ruth, I do have a couple of announced that I need or just update some projects that we have underway. Um the first one is the East Side Innovation District Vision Plan. Of course, this this commission recognizes that it passed a resolution recommending that city council adopt the vision plan. And the city council is scheduled to take up the matter on this coming Monday, October twenty fifth. So um I would like to inform the commission for anyone who might be listening or watching the replay. That is scheduled to go um before um the city council uh to consider um whether. The DASTA resolution approving the East Side Innovation District Vision Plan. And then following um the approval of the of the plan is approved. And there are a number of items within the vision plan that staff will be um working on in the near future. Um and as soon as we have a list of those, I'll be sure to inform um the commission. But that is something that we are anticipating. And then the second thing that I wanted to inform um the planning commission about. Um not only do we have our focused general plan update um still underway. We're about halfway through and uh we are scheduled to complete that um one year from now by fall uh twenty twenty two. Um to get our housing element certified or safety element um adopted, as well as any modifications that are necessary to be made to the land use element. And having the accompanying zoning in place all presented to this commission in the fall and then onward to city council. So that'll still take place um during the next calendar year. But one of the other projects that we will soon be um kicking off. In twenty twenty two, in the first quarter of twenty twenty two, um is in regards to the downtown. And this is a city council strategic objective um to uh prepare a plan. For the downtown and the greater Laurel Street corridor. And so we will be going to city council on November twenty second. Um with um a draft RFP uh to make sure that the city council um gets a chance to see this. Because this is a project that I know um is really near and dear to each and every one of the council members. And probably I could say all of the planning commissioners as well. And it's not often that we take an RFP to council before um we go out for it. But for this particular project, given that it is the downtown and greater Laurel Street corridor, we do want to do that. So I wanted to uh make sure to inform the planning commission in case anybody wanted to tune in and watch that. And learn more about it. And and we will be providing an update to the uh planning commission about all the details before we kickstart that project. But this is something um that the city council has been wanting staff to work on uh for some time. I think it's been um of interest for uh for a couple of years at least. And now it is time and we've been given the direction to move forward with that. So most likely it will be a specific plan, but more details to come. But we will be having an opportunity to kind of share what the approach for the RFP will be before it actually gets released. Um and then next year in twenty twenty two, we will also, staff is also going to be working on. What's called objective standards. And so this is in response to some housing laws that were passed. That basically requires all cities um to um adopt objective standards. So basically what this means is that um standards um for, you know, new homes, duplexes, fourplexes, multifamily buildings. The move is more towards standards that can really be um clearly identified and that are more objective. Um very easy to interpret and understand what the rules are from the for development. Versus um kind of like traditional guide, design guidelines that may have language in there that talks about. New projects being compatible or harmonious. And then the debate, you know, gets to be, well, how do you define that? So um the rules are starting to move away from those design guidelines of the more subjective. The standards that are more objective. So we are going to be working on that next year so that we can give um. Greater clarity uh to the development community, to the public. And make the process be a little more efficient and streamlined to get housing development approved. And really communicate to um the the market, you know, what what we want to see in our community when it comes to design and be very clear about that. So that's another project we'll be working on. Um and um. And then with that, um I think that's it in terms of um long range or advanced planning projects. Um as far as the planning mission schedule um looks uh going forward. Um you should have all received an email that um the November first meeting is uh. Looks like my computer wants to restart. I hope it doesn't. I think I I stopped it from doing that. Sorry, it just got a little pop up window. But November first is canceled. Um and then following that, we have. More planning commission regular um meetings on our schedule ending on uh. I guess going forward on November fifteenth, December sixth, and then and then December twentieth. And then we wouldn't come back until January seventh. The January third regular commission meeting lands on a holiday. It's the first Monday back from um the holiday break. And um usually tradition is is that we cancel that because it's very difficult to have a meeting right after. A two week break or an approximate two week break. So we would be returning on January seventeen. So I just wanted to get that out there. It's already this time of year where people's calendars get a little bit busier. People want to make their plans. So uh I just wanted to um give an update on that. And that is all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Lisa. Lisa, just a quick question. Did you say the meeting in January, the next one was the seventh or the seventeenth? I missed, I couldn't quite hear.
Seventeenth, January.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, one seventh.
Oh yeah, just to clarify. So the third is not moved to the tenth. It's canceled altogether?
Correct.
Got it. Perfect, thanks. Um Lisa, I just wanted to follow up on your objective design standards and objective standards. I think I wrote down that you said single family homes, duplexes, tries, quads. And um so I'm just trying to figure out the scope of that work. Is it, will it also be for multifamily, larger projects? And and or are there any um plans like the downtown plan that might have their own specific guidance on design standards? And are those already in place? And and you know, are the all the objective standards necessarily design standards?
Uh we well, um okay, so to answer your first question, yes, we are going to be looking at multifamily and mixed use projects as well. Um more immediate need tends to be in the um single family, you know, project that would be subject to um RDRC. This is something that's been coming up and I think Andrea may be on the line, but. Rather than get too into this, you can always agendize this and then bring it up. Um but yes, it is, it is possible. And I would um imagine that as we get into um. You know, diving into the downtown area, there could be certain standards that um are in place specifically for that context. And we may want to look um, you know, just specifically in that area. This is something that we're trying to sort of um work through to see how it needs to be addressed. But certainly as we're creating objective standards citywide, while at the same time working on a downtown specific plan. It's something that needs to be uh reconciled. But uh my guess is we'll figure out a way to kind of probably provide some foundational aspects through the basic um objective design standards. And then probably tail tailor them a little bit more specifically to the downtown context, provided um what's desired. Based upon the community engagement that um takes place for that project.
That makes sense. Thank you. Yeah, I mean, obviously it's state law to have these objective standards now. And I think it is not always easy for planning staff to create them. But I um, you know, everybody needs to do it. And it's, I think it's, you know, a good thing that. The development community understands with more certainty what is and is not acceptable. And that um and that we try to, you know, get projects to move forward by giving them advanced guidance, if you will. So um, you know, these were, for those of you who haven't been following state legislation, I mean, this was put into law because. There are some communities that use kind of the vagueness as a way to stop housing from going forward. So um so now the state has said that's not okay and we need to be more objective. So I think that's great. I um one question, Lisa, also, I don't know if the city is going to. Talk about the any impacts of more use of SB nine and SB ten, the two bills that just passed. That everyone was so excited about. And I saw the city actually had opposed. Um but I wanted to say an offer, I just saw that there was an information memo created in San Jose. About what those bills do and for San Jose, what the, you know, what the impact of those bills might be. But it's a lot of interesting information, uh easier than reading legislation. So I wanted to offer to share that. And um wanted to see if that was okay. And I would just, I would send it to you, Lisa, and allow you to forward it. With the best.
Yeah, absolutely. I'd be happy to.
Okay, yeah, thanks.
I would appreciate that, that something. It's challenging to understand the implications of those bills.
There is a lot to know.
Yes.
And um I just wanted to also, this is not the right section. I'm sorry. I guess I should be back in B, but. Um I wanted to say that I went to a regional planning collaborative meeting this week and. Did not realize that the housing element timeline actually changed from one of the bills that just passed. That it actually um makes staff and councils need to approve the draft housing elements. About seventy days earlier than they thought. Um because now there's a new law that says the state needs, there needs to be additional um. Public noticing where nothing happens, you know, while we're waiting for the public to comment. And then it would go to the state. And that's separate from the current process. So I just wanted to say that I commend Lisa for being um. Timely on the housing element. I think there are cities out there that are just scrambling. Saying, I don't know that we can get it done with seventy fewer days already. So um I'm glad that we seem to be a little bit ahead of the curve, which is a good thing.
Thank you, Commissioner Clements for bringing that up. And I will have to say that it wasn't by design. We didn't know that the state would would have been making such a change. But this change is kind of like the new norm up there in San, it comes to housing, right? So I think it was fortunate for us that we wanted to get started early. And I just think that, you know, there's so many things that are happening in our city. Unfortunately, um you know, I guess it depends. Everybody has an opinion, right? But there's a lot of new projects. But there's a lot of new projects coming to our city. And with every new project, it's an opportunity to maybe clean up an older site or make things improved. And so because of all of that activity happening, we felt it was a good idea to start our housing element early, and I'm glad we did. So I think we're going to be okay with that, with that particular new law set forth.
Yeah.
For bringing that up.
So I commend you. Good job.
Thank you. Any last-minute comments? A, B, C, or D allowed? Hearing none, that's adjourned our meeting.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Lisa and Lisa. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Lisa and Lisa.
Good night, everybody.
Thanks, Chair.
Good meeting. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Have a good night.